Welcome to the Committee of Adjustment. In accordance with the Sessions 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. And the Committee of Adjustment consider applications for variances from the provision of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to serve a property to create new lots. My name is Yim Chen. I will be chairing the hearing today. And I'd like to also introduce our panel members today. From my far left is Mr. Dylan Reed and Mr. Sahi Bayet. And my right-hand side is Deputy Secretary Chancellor Sabrina Salatino and also her staff behind her. I'd like to also acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anasabie, the Chipewa, and the Hurisuni, and the Wanda Peoples. And it's now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Native Peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through weblogs. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with the computer, tablets, smartphones, or telephones, and have the options of participating via video or audio only. The virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry, and when your item is called, you will be muted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you call on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled, and you will only be visible during your five minutes of speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as attending. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through weblogs are not allowed to use shared screen or any other panelist controls during the video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. How to receive a copy of the decision? People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee will fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the T-Lab will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the T-Lab, or some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies, such as those defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal. And the committee, the appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. And the hearing procedure will be, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. When making your submission, when an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with the presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee might ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and I will comment when you are reaching the five limit. Any presentations and other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept material during the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your names, your name, address. Please also remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposal at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate, and that all those entitled to notice will inform of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we will ask the people in this hearing room first, and then those participating through weblogs. Committee members may also ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all the speakers are finished, the applicant or the agent have an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speaker, and that will mark the end of discussion. The application will be then taken to committee for decision. And for the afternoon session, I'd like to know whether there will be declaration of conflict of interest, no, neither, and some files to be closed or requests for deferral.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. See none for today.
No today. So we are ready for item number 21. The property is at 14 Palisades, Palace, it's no avenue, okay. The purpose for this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition with a basement extension below, also to construct a new detached garage with one parking space in the rear yard. We receive a copy of the minutes of the public hearing in May 2025, and a copy of survey revised site plan for plans and elevations, cover letter from the agent, and decision affecting the property at 10, 12, and 21 Palisades. A copy of, we have an email corresponding from the agent and corresponding from the agent. We also received comments from Urban Forestry, and also advisory staff reports from Urban Forestry. And we have received letter of concern from, there's no address, but somebody called Sharon Mitterman. And we have received opposition from number 10, number 17, and number 16, 12, and 23, and 29 Palisades. And that's all the material we received. And we are ready for the agent or the applicant.
Through the chair, we have the agent online and four registered speakers.
Okay, thank you.
Paige, you've been unmuted.
By the way, I just want to add that they are seeking one variance.
Can you hear me?
Paige, are you there?
Speaking.
Oh, we hardly can hear you. It's a little bit weak.
Okay, I will try to speak very loud.
Now, now we can hear you. Yeah, now it's good, yeah.
Okay, great. My name is Paige Reisha. I'm the applicant. I'm also from Blooning. Address is 222 The Esplanade, M5A4MA, Toronto, Ontario.
Yes. Since you still have some opposition here, we require you to do a presentation, five minutes, please, yeah.
Okay. I'm here today to present my client's application for a variance related to floor space index in order to allow a modest rear two-story addition to the existing home. The proposed design is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, both in scale and in built form. The addition is located entirely at the rear, maintaining the established streetscape and ensuring no adverse impact on the visual rhythm of Palisades. Urban Forestry has confirmed they have no concerns regarding the requested variance. Planning staff have also provided written confirmation yesterday that the application meets the intent of the official plan and the zoning bylaw. Additionally, the immediate neighbors at 12 Palisades submitted a letter of support yesterday stating that they have no objections to the variance. Since the original hearing a few months ago, my clients have made significant revisions to direct, in direct response to concerns raised. The first point that has changed is the front porch enclosure. The existing porch is partially enclosed, and that will remain as is, so it will no longer be a full enclosure. The rear deck was reduced at the back, and then the garage was also shortened from 33 feet to 28 feet. The rear extension is now, originally it was only the second floor, and now it is the second, the main floor, and has a basement as well. Many homes in this neighborhood, including nearby properties, have received approvals for similar or higher FSIs ranging from 0.53 to 0.90. This proposal is modest by comparison, being at 0.56, and consistent with the prevailing built form. We believe that the design meets the four tests. This truly is minor in nature. And with the support of planning as well, by precedence by the city's own staff and by the immediate neighbors, we have made significant design changes to respond directly to feedback from the earlier hearing. We believe this application now addresses those concerns while continuing to meet all four tests under the Planning Act, and we respectfully request the committee's approval.
Thank you. You want to ask question now, or you want to wait?
I just wanted a question of clarification.
Okay.
I noticed that the length variance also has gone. I was wondering, just wondering what change was made to address that?
Yes, so the building length has not changed from the rear addition. That is still the same as what we applied for before. However, because we're no longer enclosing the front porch, which would have added extra about, I think, eight feet or so to the building length, which required the variance originally, so since we're no longer doing that, the building length is compliant with the existing zoning bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
That's, yeah, okay, that's good. So we are ready for the next speaker.
Could the speaker in person come up to the podium?
Okay.
I'm with the Swansea area ratepayers. Obviously speaking, I'll be looking for two files from our submission for the screen. One's a map of the immediate context, and the other is a chart, called 14 Palisades comparison.
Let's bring up the material first, then we can start your presentation.
Okay. This is an unusual application in that there's only one proposed variance. Of course, there are still the four tests that have to be applied to this one variance, and the agent has attempted to address these, and I'll get to that later. I've reviewed the letters from many of the neighbors and fully support the concerns and views expressed, particularly as they pertain to the physical character, built form of the street, and impact that I ask you to give due consideration to. We recognize that the depth of the building is of concern, but it is not a subject of a variance. However, the excess FSI is being deployed in the buildout of this building and contributes directly to the depth. I suggested if the developer wanted to consult with the neighbors about where the GFA could be better distributed, it might be possible to reach an agreement. Turning to the test for the official plan, let's look at the neighborhood context of the proposal. So could I get the immediate context of 14 Palisades, please? Can you stop the clock, please? Yeah, you did, thank you. There we go, okay. Great, thank you. Where was I? Yes, okay, so if you do the building count here, you see that there are 31 buildings on both sides of the street. If you take a close look, you'll note that there are different lot sizes and separations of buildings on the two sides of the street. Number 19, 21, and 23 Palisades are on the east side of the street and enjoy significantly different lot sizes, configuration, and orientation as compared to the even-numbered sides of the street. The east side is on top of a ravine and looks out over the Grenadier Pond, and the backyards are several times larger than the buildings on the west side and have greater separation. These factors heavily influence the impact of rear yard additions and make comparisons between the even and odd-numbered homes and apples and oranges situation. As such, it's our position that the approvals for 19, 21, and 23 are not comparable to this current application, they're on the other side of the street. It's interesting to note that two addresses that the applicant holds up in support of this application, number 10 and 21 Palisades, have written letters opposing it. Could we go to the chart, please? On this chart, it makes clear that the single other approval provides them with a 6.5% match for the immediate context and does not pass tests for the official plan and the bylaws. Even if you went with the applicant's claim of there being five Committee of Adjustment approvals, that would still be a 16% match, which is still a fail for the official plan test. I'd like to address the applicant's claims regarding the four tests. The applicant wrote that the, it maintains the general intent and purpose of the official plan, that the modest FSI increase supports sensitive intensification in keeping with the neighborhood scale. The section of the official plan that mostly affects this development is the neighborhood context in Chapter 4, Policy 415. This policy requires that the sensitive intensification proposed by the applicant must reinforce and support the prevailing physical character of the neighborhood. If the applicant had followed the requirements of the official plan, they would have produced a chart that I presented just a few moments ago. So this claim is a misdirection and is not supported even by their own numbers. Two, the claim that it maintains the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. The proposal respects building length setbacks and height requirements. Not disagreeing, but here again, we have a misdirection because a proposal does not respect prevailing FSI, which is the subject of the variance here, and for the neighborhood, which is, of course, the purpose and intent of the bylaw. Three, desirable for appropriate development of the land. The design enables a modern livable home for a family while maintaining compatibility with surrounding properties. There's already a modern livable home here. This is just about having more. This contributes to a larger footprint, more to heat, more to cool, contributing to the urban heat dome problem, storm runoff problems, less green space, and undesirable impacts for the neighbors. Minor in nature, the requested density is within a range already approved on the street and will not create adverse impacts. As the committee knows, minor is not defined by previous approvals. The committee has said that each application is to be judged on its own merits, and given the impact that the neighbors have raised in their letters, it should be clear that they are saying clearly to the committee that the impact is not minor for them. I submit that this application, even though it's for a single variance, has a...
Five minutes is up.
Yes, does not pass the four tests. I do have a question. The agent did say they had a letter that indicated that it meets the official plan and the bylaws. Is that letter on the website?
No, I do not know. We can get the agent to respond to that, okay. Yeah. So you've finished. You have any question to this speaker? No? So let's have the next speaker, please, yeah.
Phil, you've been unmuted.
Thank you very much. Let's see. All right. Okay, thank you very much. My name is Phil Black. I am at 10 Palisades, and we oppose the revised application on similar grounds, actually, that the previous speaker mentioned. Essentially, it is on two points. While we appreciate the reduced GFA or GFI, the main point is that the rear addition is completely out of keeping with the surrounding, with the surrounding neighbors. So this is a great drawing. Thank you for pulling that up. As you can see, the rear addition would be deeper by about 10 feet of the neighbor to And we are just south of that neighbor, which is at 12 Palisades. Our addition was in keeping with the backyards of our neighbors, and there used to be a time when people didn't actually go beyond their neighbors so that they wouldn't impinge on their enjoyment of their backyards. Ours is actually five feet or so shorter than our neighbor to the north, which is 12 Palisades, which would make the extension on 14 Palisades about 15 feet deeper than ours currently. In addition, the extension would make the depth of that building about 15 feet deeper than the neighbor to the north, which is 16 Palisades. So looking from the top, this would completely, you know, it would completely violate any sort of conformity to backyards and extensions. So this would be a complete outlier in that. So we oppose the application on those grounds. That would disrupt sightlines, continuity of natural lighting, and so on. I think, you know, that is our main objection.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you have, we have a question for you.
Just a couple of questions. I think that the agent argued that your FSI is actually similar to what she's asking for. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, so in the application, in our extension, we got to about 5.55 in terms of the GFA, and our lot is substantially deeper, and I believe wider than this lot. And, you know, the, I think, one neighbor on our side in the rear is actually a church parking lot. So if you look at the considerations of the space themselves, they're quite different.
Okay, and your house extends further forward, I believe, than the applicant's. Is that correct?
Yeah, because the street curves...
Because you have a bit more extra space at the front?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? You have two, is that...
I'm done.
You are done? Okay. So let's have the next speaker done with the questions.
Lisa, you've been unmuted.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, yeah.
Yes, hello, my name is Lisa Struckin. I am one of the owners with my husband Hugh Kerr at number 12, the house immediately to the south of number 14. There are a couple of points of clarification that I would like to make. First of all, we did not write, our initial letter was not a letter of objection, it was a letter of concern, and our most recent letter was not a letter of support. It was also a letter of concern. We ourselves have put an addition on our house, so we are not in a position to object to what he's doing. We understand the need or the desire for more space when you have three children. However, we would like to have conditions imposed to ensure that they build substantially in accordance with the plan submitted, that there be no change to the building envelope, essentially that they build only what is approved and what they say that they're building, partly because of issues that arose with the construction of number 19 across the street, which are described in the letters from the owners of number 21 and 23. We're also concerned about the tree at the front of the house. We have lost two hu, well, actually now three huge trees in the neighborhood in the last year, one of which was at the front of number 19, and two of which are directly behind number 14. Through no fault of anybody, it was, one of them fell down during a storm, and the other one was deemed unsafe and taken down subsequent to that. But as a result, we do not want to see that tree at the front compromised or injured or removed in any way. I think that's about all I have to say.
Yes, I have a question. When you said that you would like to see the development tied to the plans, can you specify, is it all the four plans or just site plan?
The plan, whatever it was submitted, I'm not an expert on describing what it is that should or should not be. It's the building envelope and the plans that were submitted. Basically, whatever it is they've asked for approval to build is what they should build, without any additional surprises or changes at the building permit stage.
Okay, so we include the site plans and all the four plans, right? Yeah. Okay. The second question to you, for me, is Urban Forestry actually issued a memo to give them advice on the construction of the front, so I think that is some concern is addressed, being addressed there, yeah.
Okay, there is another, we do actually have another tree at the back of our property that may be compromised. It's also been identified, so we would like to have that protected as well.
I will let the agent to respond to that because I don't know about that one. Okay. So any question to this speaker? No? Okay, we can move to the next one. Thank you.
Through the chair, the last speaker is also from the same household, so there's three minutes left. I don't know if that speaker wants to use the rest of them time.
Well, we can just ask whether they want to use the three minutes, then we can stop the clock.
Hugh, you've been unmuted.
No, I concur certainly with what Lisa has said, and, yeah, just maybe I'd that the tree at the back is a U of fairly substantial size, and to Lisa's point that we've lost, you know, the two large trees at the back, the already, again, just by virtue of circumstances, it's really important to maintain the one we have on our property. It does provide quite a measure of privacy for us, and, yeah, we'd like to see that maintained. Again, we do, we understand from the agent's letters that they're going to make endeavors to that effect, and certainly we're hopeful that's the end result.
Okay, we can get the agent to, yeah, to respond to that concern, okay. Any questions? Now we can bring back the agent.
Thank you, members of the committee, and thank you everyone who spoke on the application as well. First up, I would like to clarify that my client resides in this home with his family. I noticed in the letters and today the first speaker mentioned that he's a developer, and I just want to clarify that that's not the case. To clarify as well the first speaker's comments, I did only state that 12 Palisades submitted a letter of support, not 10 and 21, as suggested. And then further to that, the homeowner of 12 Palisades is here and spoke on that, so just wanted to address her concerns directly. My client has every intention to keep the trees. Urban Forestry also, as already said... Urban forestry also, as already said in this hearing, that they are providing an advisory as well. So we're going to follow through with that. And obviously, if there's any concerns that you have throughout construction, you can absolutely speak with my client directly about that. Further to, the first speaker mentioned that there would be a water runoff issue. However, the proposed design meets the zoning bylaws requirements for soft landscaping, which is the primary reason that bylaw exists. The assistant planner assigned to this application sent an email stating she had no issues with the FSI, and this was uploaded yesterday to the city's website. For 10 Palisades, their lot being wider and deeper would actually prove that their gross floor area is much larger for an FSI of 0.55, which is what they were approved for. So I just wanted to clarify that one as well. Further to privacy and light concerns, height and size setbacks comply fully with zoning. The stepped-back rear design helps maintain light and sky views, although, again, 10 Palisades is a little bit further down the street. And they also are south of 14 Palisades, so I'm not quite sure how it would impact them, but I appreciate their comments. Further to that, yeah, just in summary, really, the application has been significantly reduced since the last hearing. And we have professional and neighbor support and aligns with both policy and precedents, so we respectfully request approval on this one.
Oh, I have one question, just to clarify. Are there's the trees, the urban forestry memo about the trees in the front, right? There's some concern from one of your neighbors to, they talk about the trees at the back. Are those being also preserved?
So there is one tree in the back on the neighbor's property to the south that is near the garage. So that tree would require a permit to injure because of the proximity to the garage. So the garage will be supported by helicopters, which is favorable by the urban forestry and all different, compared to all the other methods of foundations. So with that, it's like a, if you think of like a little nail that's in the ground, it's just a pinpoint location, so you can plan where they go and move around the roots of the tree. So that is what, how the garage will be constructed. And we obviously will pursue the permit to injure.
I see. So following that comment, so if you're going to impose the forest standard condition, like, is it F2 to injure three, then you have to apply for permit? Will you agree to that condition?
For the rear tree on the neighbor's side, yes.
Oh, no, on your side, no. No, we, sorry.
Madam Chair, we can impose conditions on.
Then someone else.
It has to be on the subject property.
Oh, I didn't realize, yeah. But, all right, so we forget about that condition, yeah, okay. Any question to this applicant? No more questions, so now we are in committee.
Oh, sorry, yes, a question.
You do have a question, that's.
Yeah, your neighbor asked if we could tie the application to plans and elevations. Would you be okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Through you, Madam Chair, would be site plan and elevation plans.
Yeah.
Technically, don't tie to floor plans.
No, no, I just said site plans, no.
Yeah, site plan and elevations, yeah.
Anyway, okay, yeah. So that's all the question, let's discuss this, yeah. Okay.
Maybe I'll start off, Chair, thank you. I think it's commendable that this was a package that was previously deferred. And previously, I think we had four variances requested. And the agent has come back with one. And I think they obviously listened to the concerns that were expressed and come back with one. So they've made adjustments. And before us, we have a single variance, and the variance is essentially an FSI, which I do not believe is excessive at all. So I think this is an eminently supportable application.
All right, all right.
Yeah, I would agree, the FSI that's being asked for is not unusual. And, I mean, yes, it's a slightly shorter lot, but there's still space. It's not affecting either length or rear yard setback or rear yard landscaping. So there is the size, the lot is big enough to hold this kind of extension with just really an FSI variance, which, like I said, is not really, it's a FSI that's not really that remarkable or outstanding.
Okay, so do we have a motion on the floor? Yes, sir.
I'd like to move a motion to approve this application. And the only conditions we would have is to tie the application to site plans and elevations.
Yes.
We've already noted that there's a forestry advisory, but that's all it is. It's an advisory.
Yes, yeah, that's one condition, yeah, tied to the, yes, second, Mr. Reed, second, all in favor of that condition? All in favor, unanimously approved, thank you. So we, our next item is number 22, 647 College Street. This is to convert the existing three-story mixed-use building into a residential apartment building and to construct a rear ground-floor patio. There will be a six, a total of six residential dwelling units on this lot. And also, we, four long-term bicycle parking will be provided. We have received the minute of the May 28 public hearing and a copy of the revised site plan, four plans and elevation, and a copy of survey, and also a cover letter from the agent and comments from transportation engineering. And we see support from unit 202, 647 College, and also units 301 and 302 from the same address. Now we're ready for the agent, yeah.
Through the chair, we have the agent online and no registered speakers.
Okay.
Good evening, through you, Madam Chair, Silvato Recremi, here to present this application. Address is 2572 Eglington Avenue West.
Okay, since you do not have any opposition, and I think that you're seeking three variances, and I can see that they're straightforward, and we have reviewed all the material, I see whether we need a, we have question or you want a presentation?
Yeah, just a question.
Oh, that's a question. We do not need a presentation, but we have a question, please.
I just, there's a discrepancy between the purpose of the application and variance three. I just wanted to see if we could correct that. The purpose of the application says four long-term parking spaces will be provided, which I think is from the plans what's intended. But variance three says three long-term parking spaces and one short-term parking space will be provided. So should we correct number three to change that to four long-term parking spaces?
Through you, Mr., or through you, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
We can say that there will be four bicycle parking spaces.
Okay.
And then the variance speaks to three long-term and one short-term. So we can say a total of four bicycle parking spaces.
You don't want to change the purpose because that would.
No, no, that's what I'm saying.
Sorry, I mean, do you want to change the, because I think that it's actually supposed to be four long-term is actually what's in the plans.
Oh, you mean that it's supposed to be five?
No, there's four, I think there's four long-term, no short-term in the plans. I don't know, I'm asking the agent whether that's correct.
Yeah, because the variance reads differently.
Yeah. Sorry, is the agent online? Can the agent address this?
Yeah, he can, he can clarify that.
So on the plans, and that's going to be page drawing A1.04, it's just outlined as four bicycle parking spaces. It was in consultation with the zoning examiner, that that's how the proposed terminology was written on the notice. I think I agree with the Secretary of Management of Treasure that we just outlined that four bicycle parking spaces are provided.
Yeah, maybe in both the purpose and the variance?
Through you, Madam Chair, can I just double-check the zoning review? Because I don't, I don't want Toronto buildings to come back and say that a variance is required because we didn't.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I just want to make sure.
I don't want to mess things up, I just want it to be consistent.
That the wording is correct.
We could just say four bicycle parking spaces.
But if there's only notice.
In the purpose of application, we can say a total of four bicycle parking spaces will be provided, and then leave the variance to read between long-term and short-term. I'm just double-checking. So through you, Madam Chair, the zoning review says six long-term and two short-term are required. In this case, three long-term, one short-term.
That's fine. We'll just take out the long-term in the purpose.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I mean, it's on College Street, so there's short-term parking, like, on the street, so it's not really necessary, but it's not a big issue.
Okay, just, we just changed the purpose.
Yeah, we'll just change the purpose.
Not the bylaw, okay. That's clear, clear. And do we have any other questions?
I'm done.
No?
Maybe, I'm a little concerned about this. So maybe, very briefly, the applicant could explain the live-work nature of the ground floor and how they see that working?
Through you, Madam Chair, the live-work space was a request of community planning, oh, sorry, to correct, it was the request of community planning to maintain a commercial operation. It was our proposal to propose the live-work unit on the ground floor. The floor plate was designed in that the front half of the unit, essentially, is adaptable to a multitude of different low-impact commercial uses. And the rear of the unit has two bedrooms along with a contained three-piece washroom where owners or workers of the business could reside. In terms of more detail than that, it's difficult because, obviously, that's going to be a future commercial space and a future tenant, and it's up to them how they're going to ultimately use the space, but it would have to conform to the zoning of the property that is native to it.
But presumably, it's possible someone could just live there and not actually use it as a workspace.
I guess that is correct.
Okay.
That has also been native zoning of the property as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so that's good. So are we in, can we discuss this?
Yep.
Okay, we can, we are in committee now, yeah. Okay, please, Mr. Reed, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I think that it's damaging to the, it's a strong retail space, and I think it's damaging to have this sort of retail strips begin to have residential in it. However, clearly, the zoning does not require that. Oh, sorry, I did want to ask the agent one of the things. Sorry, can we go back?
Okay.
I just want to, maybe, the first, the earlier one had a limit, there was a zoning limit on the number of residential spaces, which is no longer in this one. I was just wondering if you could, the agent could explain that briefly, what happened there?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. There was, the original zoning examiner incorrectly identified variances. And actually, our zoning examiner changed. And through further review, it was identified that that was an inappropriate variance. There isn't a cap on the number of units. There is a limit on FSI, and that was corrected. And we do not have a variance for number of units nor for residential floor space.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, yeah, so back to committee, I was saying, there is no, the zoning does not actually demand a commercial there. So I appreciate, first of all, that city planning pushed the applicant to have a bit of a more flexible space, and I appreciate that the applicant has made an effort to make that possible. And there's not really anything more we can do. So, you know, I think it's, it's basically selling transportation issues, and those ones are absolutely fine. There's lots of bike parking on College. There's really no need for a car parking in this transit and bike-friendly area. So the, you know, the actual variances are absolutely supportable. So I just wanted to register the sort of, I think it's important to be keeping commercial on the ground level. And I appreciate that planning and the applicant have combined to actually at least make that possible, even if it's not guaranteed.
Actually, I do not know, I have the same reaction as yours. And usually, especially on a street like College Street, and all mostly small business, small, that it create the atmosphere for the whole street. And I'm very unwilling to support to convert it into residential. That's what my biggest concern.
Yeah.
But although the work lift base can be sort of straddled into two, but it seems that it's still not guaranteed that will be commercial use.
Yeah, I agree, but the zoning doesn't require it, so we can't really, we can't really stop that.
No, it doesn't require to be commercial.
I know, to my surprise.
Yeah, I'm surprised, usually, I will, yeah, I will not support that guy. But anyway, thank you for letting me know too, this is, okay, surprise. All right, so you have anything to add? And then do we have a motion on the floor?
I guess I will reluctantly make a motion to approve these variances. And I don't think there's any, there's no, there's no conditions.
It's amended, with amended.
As amended, yes.
Yeah, yes.
As amended.
I would say, do we have a second for this motion? Yeah, Mr. Bayett, second. And all approve with that amended purpose, approve unanimously, thank you. Okay, now we come to item 23. Okay. Item number 23 is 869 Palmerston Avenue. This is to alter existing two-story townhouse by constructing a rear second-story addition. On this, we receive a copy of survey, sorry, site plan for plan elevations, two photographs of trees on the property, and also a tree protection plan from the agent. And we do not, we haven't received any other material from this, yeah.
Through the chair, we have the agent online, and we did have a registered speaker at 867 Palmerston Avenue, but we were unable to locate her.
Oh, okay. She hasn't submitted any written opposition or letters, right? All right, so let's have the agent, please, yeah.
Tariq, you've been unmuted.
Hi, thank you. My name is Tariq Afridi from 3742 Forest Bluff Crescent. I am representing 869 Palmerston Avenue. So the clients wanted to have a second-story addition. And, you know, by putting a bedroom there, it was a small space, so we slightly increased. So a variance was triggered for the FSI. Point six was allowed, but now we are requesting 4.74. And that's the only variance we have, and we request that you allow for approval, yeah.
Thank you. So, yeah, thank you. It looked like it was quite a straightforward application. Do you have any questions to the applicant?
Just a quick one.
Yes, please.
I take it this is, as the purpose indicates, is to alter an existing. That's all it is?
Yeah.
It's an existing structure?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, we do not have any questions now in the committee. We can discuss this, yeah, or a motion, yeah.
It is a very straightforward, it's an alteration of an existing structure whereby the FSI will increase. So I do not believe this is in any way a problem. I think it's a very straightforward application, so I'd like to move a motion to approve. No conditions.
And Mr. Reed, second, all in favor of no conditions? I guess I saw his hand, yeah, approve unanimously, thank you. So the next item is number 24, and the property is 486 North Cliff Boulevard. This is to construct a two-story auxiliary building containing a garden suite in the rear yard of the four blocks. Now it's under construction. There will be a total of five residential dwelling units on this lot. There will be a total of five residential dwelling units on this lot. And, and one in the, uh, garden suite and four in the main building. We receive a site, a survey site plan for plant elevations. And we receive a revised site plan for plant elevations. Four photographs of the property and decision affecting the subject property and also correspondence from the agent. We receive, uh, comment, uh, we receive comments from, uh, urban forestry and also support from, uh, one, two, three, four, uh, letters of support and two in North Cliff and then two from West, uh, one from Westman and one for Glenhome. And we have, uh, received as opposition from four eight one North Cliff.
Through the chair, we have the agent online and we have one registered speaker in interest.
Uh, interest. So the interest is in opposition, that's concern, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, we, we're not sure.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, through the chair, would you like me to check with that speaker first?
Then whether we need to have a presentation, yeah, okay.
John, you've been unmuted.
Hi, yes. Um, so we're not necessarily opposed, um, we're on the neighboring from the backside. Um, we do have some concerns about the height and distance to our property of the garden suite.
Yes.
Um, and just, just wondering if there has been any kind of, um, sunlight, uh,
Okay.
Kind of analysis done to see what sort of shade will be casted, given that the property is already at a higher elevation? And if you're putting, uh, multiple stories above typical guidelines there, is that going to result in significant shade increase to our backyard and your property?
Okay, thank you, it seems to be, yeah, enough concern. So I, I think maybe we will request the agent to, uh, uh, to introduce himself, I think we, we, we should have a presentation from him, yeah.
Noam, you've been unmuted.
The agent, uh, on this file, uh, I'm located at fourteen Leswin Road in Toronto. Uh, yes, I'd love to, I'd love to present the, uh, the presentation that we submitted. Um, I wonder if you can get that up, up on the screen for us, please?
Yeah, let's bring up the materials first and then we can start your five minutes, yeah.
Uh, through the chair, could the speaker introduce their, their name?
Yeah, and the address.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, yeah, I think we.
Yeah, my name is Noam Hazan, I'm the agent on this file, uh, located at fourteen Leswin Road, Toronto.
Okay, thank you. Let's bring up the material and then we can start, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, uh, we are having a issue with the PDF, so I'll take a little bit of time.
It's the, uh, it's the file that says supporting material, I don't know if you have, if you see that one on your, on your screen, CA supporting material, I believe.
Oh, is it, is it the last corresponding support, no. Is it the presentation, uh, package?
Yeah, it's a PDF, uh, we submitted it, uh, a couple of days ago, it's show, it's showing on the website and I can download it from there, uh, where you have, you know, all the supporting documents.
Uh, through the chair, we're trying to pull the document up, we're just experiencing some issues.
Oh, I see, the mi- the file themselves, I can, I see. Okay. So, uh, it seems that there may be some problem bringing them up. Uh, will you be able to use what you submitted in terms of what we got, like plans, elevations and all?
Through you, Madam Chair, we're just going to try one other way, just
Okay.
Just give us, uh,
Okay.
A minute here.
We can wait, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, through the chair, it appears that the file is damaged.
Okay.
I can resend the file if that helps, uh, and I have the one, I, I'm able to download the one from your website that says rece- oh, there you go.
No, we got it somehow, yeah, someone did it, yeah. Oh, okay, that's, that's great, so, uh, we can start now, right? Okay.
Okay, yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready, thank you.
No, it's fine, so we can start, yeah, please, yeah.
Okay, okay, um, okay, so I'll start, I just, just to, just to address the, um, the gentleman that spoke earlier. So just want to, just a couple of points that he mentioned, um, from the rear, so just if we go back to that view, um, you can see actually, we have stepped down a bit and we aren't exceeding the, the maximum height of six meters. We do have the forty-five, uh, I mean, um, degree plane at the back. So really, if, if this was, you know, if, if we didn't have that issue with the distance between the, the variance with the distance between the, the garden suite and the multiplex, um, you know, this would be as of right, so I just wanted to point that out. Um, but, uh, yeah, just addressing that point and we have gone down for the ground floor slightly so that we don't exceed that height um, for the garden suite. Okay, if we can go to the next slide, that'd be great, please, thank you. Um, so it is of our, uh, opinion that this does meet all the four criteria of a minor variance. Um, the variants requested are, in our, in our opinion, extremely minor. The proposal is desirable for the appropriate development of the land, uh, and the building. Uh, the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaws are maintained and the general intent and purpose of the official plan are maintained. We did look at some comparisons, uh, there was, uh, a couple of, uh, approved, um, similar, uh, variances. Um, one on North Cliff, which was one seventy-three North Cliff, which had a two story, uh, with a five meter setback. Um, we also had, um, which, which is over, over the four meter height. We also have a one-eight-nine Livingston and, and ninety-seven Endersdale, so there are a bunch of precedents in the neighborhood. Um, if you wouldn't mind going to the next site, go to the next slide, please. So it, there is some unique context here and I just want to sort of clarify that. Um, so there are some, you know, we are, we do back onto this laneway, the laneway isn't accessible, um, to our unit. So it's not considered a laneway house, but there is, uh, you know, decent buffer between this property and the properties at the rear. They also have laneway, uh, ancillary structures on their laneway, uh, street. Um, there is a letter of support from the neighbor to the south of us that does share a driveway. So this is the site that would be mostly impacted by this, uh, proposal. Um, there are also some precedence of ancillary structures protruding much further towards the street than ours, as you can see on that green. Um, and if you could, uh, go to the next slide, actually. Uh, okay, so, sorry, yeah, okay, we'll, we'll go, we'll go variance by variance. Um, but there was a, there, there is an image that I think really represents the context here, which is why it's quite a unique site. Um, so regarding the first variance, the soft landscaping, uh, you know, we're only five percent off, uh, from the requirement. If you do account for the area below the stairs, we are actually over that. We, I have found that some examiners do include that and some don't. Um, so we would be over the fifty percent requirement. Uh, if that portion is included, it wasn't included in the calculation, so I do want to highlight that. Um, if we can go to the next slide, please. So, two, two variances here that I wanted to address. So one is that, you know, that the, the site is on a significant, um, slope, let's say. And if, if the garden suite was at the same level as the established grade, we would as of right be able to build mu- significantly higher, so that, that, um, that dash pink line is showing that if it was a flat site, our garden suite would actually be significantly higher. And that's why we don't think that the, the massing here has such a significant impact on surrounding, just due to the conditions of that site. Um, if we were to do a, um, a single story, you can see that, um, we are much closer to the multiplex on a single story and it does reduce that, uh, that landscaping area and it would also reduce the amenity space for the tenants. So that's why we did decide to do a two story and it is important to point out that we are only protruding into that seven point five meters on the second floor. Um, the, the lower floor, I believe, is, um, is also slightly, is, is seven point two, so not as significant, um, on that lower floor because we have cantilevered out. Um, could we go to the next slide, please? Um, and again, same with the angular planes, um, you know, we, because of, because of the, uh, reduced setback, we are triggering that, um, that angular plane. You can see the difference is, is very marginal compared to the as of right and where we are showing.
Your five minutes is up, so, yeah, yeah, give us the summation.
Okay, I think, I, yeah, I, I didn't have visibility of the timer for some reason, but, uh, if we can just go to, to the next slide, I think there's a summary on there.
Okay, we got it.
Yeah, essentially that's the summary and I'll, I'll let you read it off the screen.
Yeah, we can read it, yes, it's read, good, thank you. Uh, any question, uh, to, to, uh, you, let's listen to the, we have, you have someone, uh, with concern. So let's, uh, listen to him first and then we get back to you, okay? Yeah.
John, you've been unmuted.
Hi, yeah, so, um, just in regards to the height and, um, the sun variance or sun analysis. So are you saying that the heights of the new buildings would not cast any shade? Just given the pattern of sun in relation to the property, um, any heights over the back, especially given that the property is elevated, um, would cast greater shadows? So, um, what, what was done to kind of see what the impact would be on the neighbors to the west of the property?
Okay, yeah, all right, we can have the agent, uh, back to answer that question. So, uh, have you, do I have any more to say? You have four more minutes, four and a half more minutes. Have you, have you finished? Sorry, yeah.
That's, that's my main concern, if I could be addressed that, you know, it wouldn't be causing any issues. We wouldn't necessarily be opposed to the, uh, garden suite or the variances, uh, in relation to it. Um, but we do want to make sure that that has been addressed in some sense.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Uh, through the chair, we didn't get the speaker's full name and address.
Yeah, can you give us your?
Sorry, it's John Kogrick from four ninety-five Western Oak.
Four ninety-five, is it? All right.
Noam, you've been unmuted.
Hi, yeah, um, okay, so, yeah, I, I appreciate the concern of the, uh, the resident at the rear. Um, it isn't, uh, it isn't a requirement to do a, uh, a shadow study on this scale of project. Um, you know, we, we have, uh, complied with the angular planes. Um, so again, like my, I guess the, the point here is that, you know, if the site was a, a flat site, that, that height would be a lot more significant. Um, you can see that on the, um, on the, I guess, the elevation at the back. Um, or, or even in the presentation that I presented earlier on, uh, on page five. Um, you know, had, had, had the site been flat, that, then there would, there would have been a much more significant impact. Yeah, you can see it there, much more significant impact with, um, with the garden suite and that would be on a typical site. Um, whereas because this is quite a unique site in that it does grade quite significantly from the front of the property to the back, uh, we are much lower than, you know, what a typical garden suite would be, um, on one of these four plus one projects. Um, again, we, we've adhered to the angular planes, so, you know, that does help with shadows. Um, and there is, again, a significant buffer between our property and the, the rear properties and with, in that there is a laneway and, and they, they also have ancillary structures. So by the time any shadow actually reaches there, it, I, I don't know if any sha- again, I don't know if any shadows will reach there, but it seems unlikely given the distance, um, from our property to the neighboring property. Um, I think that should hopefully answer that question.
Okay, thank you. All, all right, uh, any question to the applicant from us? Yes, we do have some questions.
Just, just a couple of quick, I'm looking at the, uh, your application of November the twentieth, twenty twenty-four. And at the time, the purpose very clearly included that the existing ancillary building, which was a detached garage, will be maintained. And this application, of course, a little less than a year, has come back with a request for, uh, uh, garden suite, laneway suite, um, where variances two and three are looking for a fifty percent, uh, greater height variance. I'm just wondering why this has come up now instead of when you had the application last year? Is there any particular reason or?
Yeah, yeah, so, so a cou- a couple of reasons, I mean, one is the, the recent change in, uh, in development charges. Um, so that's now not really a concern anymore, um, you know, where, whereas previously, uh, there were development charges being triggered with a garden suite and now, uh, that's been, I guess, rectified, uh, you know, quite recently. Um, and, uh, essentially, essentially that's the main reason that we are doing this, um, this proposal. Uh, and we believe, uh, you know, the, the clients believe that there is, uh, you know, still a need for supplying housing and, um, and, and given, given the site, there is a significant depth at the back for a, a decent sized unit. So, um, they wanted to utilize that space at the back of the property. Does that, does that answer the question?
Yeah, I have another question, just to, uh, clarify, uh, variance number, uh, uh, number four, uh, it says that you, but I thought that you said you have cleared the forty-five, uh, degree angular plane on the rear, but is it number four still apply?
Yeah, so, so the forty-five, the forty-five degree, so all the way around, so you have to do it all the way around, uh, around where, where your lot, like, where your basically setbacks are. The only one we don't comply with is the one at the, you know, where the built, where the garden suite faces the multiplex because we have that less, that distance, which is less than seven point five. Had we been at seven point five, we would still have that angular plane, like, we do have the plane still there. It's just now projected into the setback between the multiplex and the, where the garden suite should be.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
I, I, it makes sense, but, uh, in terms of the direction, isn't it, uh, is it the rear of the auxiliary building or the rear of the multiplex? Because it says, uh, west side is the rear, west lot line, that's, it's a bit confused for me. I thought that the rear lot line is
It's set.
On the other side of the auxiliary building.
If you keep reading, I mean, yeah, the wording is a bit confusing, but it does say, uh, it does say from rear main wall of residential building on same lot. So I don't, maybe it's badly worded, um, like part of the city building containing garden suite. Uh, towards the rear lot line, uh, yeah, I think that may be just badly worded, um, but it, it does clarify, uh, from the main wall of the, of the residential building on the same block.
That's, that's, uh, it, it even confused me more, shouldn't it be, if it's towards the multiplex, that's the east side, right?
Yeah, it's a bit confusing, I'm not sure, I mean, we, we are compliant on that back wall, um, we, we do have a forty-five angle plane.
I, I read your drawings, it seems that you have complied with the west side. And if it's the east side, it's towards. And if it's the east side, it's towards the multiplex, you should be saying.
Yeah.
I get, I could, that's why I want to clarify.
It should be on the east side that, that it penetrates the.
Yeah, that was, that's good, I didn't notice that, but, uh, it looks to me as an error, because we do comply on the, on the west side.
So, so we changed it to east side, I think it's only just typo or the orientation is wrong.
Yeah, no, I agree, I hadn't noticed that, but.
Because the drawings.
It's very clear that it's the east side, that it's the, where it's penetrating.
Exactly, where it penetrate, and also the west side on the drawings, everything comply, you can see, okay. Let's, let's make that correction. Good, good thing that I picked up, I guess.
Yeah, good catch.
Okay, uh, other than that, uh, uh, do we have any more questions? Otherwise, we are in committee, let's discuss this, okay, please, Mr. Ritter, yeah.
Um, yeah, so I, I would say this is a very thoughtful design. Um, I'm impressed that they've dropped the whole building a little bit to reduce the impact. I think that's really, a really positive. Um, I really, the fact that they've included the angular planes, especially for both, you know, that reduces the impact for both the neighbors and the rear, um, uh, the, the ne- rear neighbor who was concerned. I, I think the rear neighbor's concerns, uh, are well alleviated, uh, between the, uh, angular plane and the laneway. Um, I don't, I don't think it's gonna.
There's also setback, they meet the setback.
Yeah, I don't think it'll have an impact, any shadow impact. Um, anyway, I think it's a very thoughtful design, um, and, uh, really well-integrated into the space. Um, you know, with the, with the, having dropped it a little bit with the angular planes. Uh, so I'm, I'm happy to support this, uh, with, um, uh, with forestry condition number three.
And also amended.
A- as amended, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Byatt, second?
No, no, not yet.
Oh, sorry.
Just have some comments, um, you know, I, I, the, the question I asked about, uh, the, this application before us last year, um, I'm, I'm really concerned about the excessive height.
Okay.
So it's variance two and three. We've already got a fourplex, uh, which has its own massing effect, fine. Uh, but then to have an additional, uh, garden suite at the back that also represents massing, where you've got a fifty percent increase in the height, and that's very problematic with both, uh, both, uh, variance two and variance three. So I find it difficult to support this particular, those two variances, which basically negates the application.
Okay, thanks.
I suspect if they wanted a two-story garden suite, um, four meters, additional two meters may not have been necessary. Perhaps something lower, but it may find this, uh, difficult to support.
Yeah, I, 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 I see your point, so, um, my take is that, uh, I think it is, uh, a well-thought-out plan, uh, in, in that, uh, it's, it seems that the fourplex is already, uh, approved, and has been built, although it is tall. But I, I think that, 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 uh, the required distance is seven point five, and then they will be able to build what they building now. But there is located in six point six, so it is, uh, a little less than a meter short. And I, I think that because that, I consider is a, like, a minor, very minor deviation, so I think that I can still support this, uh, application. And, 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 and what I, 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 I think that it add to the merits that they tried to, uh, conform with all the, uh, forty-five degree angular plane that will mitigate the height, um, which is on focus, just center, in the center, really, yeah. Okay, so with, that's my, my take, yeah.
I'll, I'll also just add that, um, last year, uh, yeah, Pete, as, as he explained, if you tried to build a fourplex plus a garden suite, you would trigger development charges, whereas individually, garden suites and fourplexes were exempt from development charges. So there was this, uh, kind of a hiccup in the regulations. So I, I don't, I don't see this as being a, uh, this, this particular one as being, um, you know, uh, tricky. I think it, it was, you, you know, they, they had to do it in separate parts in order to avoid the development charges. And the city, I think, has now changed that so that you can apply for both at once.
Okay.
So I, I don't think that that was, uh, you know, um, underhanded.
Okay, so do you still want to put a motion?
I will put a motion forward to approve, I think I did.
Yeah, you did already, so you're just looking for. Looking for a second, so I will second the motion, yeah. And all in favor of the approval, two, one, Mr. Byatt, dissent, yeah. Okay, so we, we move to item number twenty fi- do, do, do you need a, a break, anyone? No? Okay, let's move to, um, item number twenty.
Maybe after, a break after this one.
Okay, yes, uh, it, uh, the property is at eleven, uh, I, I pronounce it as a Breckendale Hill Road. Uh, this is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a one-story rear addition and a two-story side addition with a new undersized driveway and an integral garage and a rear grand for walkout with stairs. The existing detached garage will be demolished. And, um, we have received a copy of a survey site plan for plan elevation, and a five photograph of trees, and we received comment from transportation engineering. And they have, uh, they're seeking eight variances. And we, we're ready for the agent or the applicant.
Through the chair, we have the agent online and no registered speakers.
No registered speaker, okay.
Good evening, Chair, my name is Daniel Felsen, I am here on behalf of the owners of eleven day, uh, Breckendale Hill Road.
Yeah, you do not have, uh, any oppositions, and let me check whether the panel required a presentation first.
No question.
Uh, we don't, uh, need a presentation, we have studied all the materials, so, but we do have a question here for you.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, just, I, I think that there's a discrepancy between the purpose of the application and variance number three. The purpose of the application says that it's a new undersized driveway, but I think it's actually should be oversized based on variance number three, is that correct?
That is right, the maximum with the permitted is three point zero five, whereas we're seeking a four point six five. I will double-check the drawing, yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay, so we'll, we'll revise the purpose of the application to read a new oversized driveway? Is that okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, so it's amended, all right, so, uh, any other questions? Or are we ready to discuss this? We are ready to discuss this, okay, we have, we do not have any more question to you. Do you have anything you want to address the panel before we move into discussion?
No.
Okay, all right, so, so we're in committee now.
The, the, the plans submitted are not very good.
Okay.
It's kind of hard to figure out exactly what's being asked for. Um, but it is a short lot, so I think that it's not unreasonable that an, an extension, um, will, uh, reduce the rear guard setback. That's my thought.
What, what do you think about variance number three, uh, allowable?
There's no, there's no, there's a really.
No impact, like, you're asking for? Not more.
The graphic provided is really, is not very good, so it's hard to see.
Oh, I see.
Honestly?
Yeah, it seemed to be like a scanned drawing or something, it's not a real drawing itself. They got a lot of shadows, okay.
I think this looks like a very, pardon me, reasonable application. You look at the photographs of the existing structure.
Okay.
Um, and the renditions of the proposed, uh, it makes eminent sense to extend to the side of the house, put in an integral garage. Roofline is, uh, also altered appropriately. So I think it's actually quite a, uh, quite a good design. And the one that won't have any impact on anybody other than, uh, the new residents.
Okay, and it seems that the transportation have no comment about the oversized driveway.
That's right.
Yeah.
No objection.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, do, do we have, uh, more comment, or we have a motion? Yes, please, yes.
Um, so I'd like to move a motion to approve this application, um, as amended, and, uh, no conditions attached.
Okay, as one second, Mr. Reis second. All in favor of amended, uh, application, uh, all in favor, uh, unanimously approved, thank you. Uh, we're taking a five-minute break. So we resume with the next item, number twenty-six, fifty-two Vernon Street. This is to construct a new two-story ancillary building containing, uh, dwelling, which is a garden suite. There will be a total of five, uh, dwelling units on this lot. Four units in the main, uh, three-story fourplex, and also, that one is also under construction and the one in the garden suite. We receive a, a copy of a survey site plan for plans elevations, five photographs of the property, and the decision affecting the, uh, subject property, and also, uh, planning rationale from the agent, uh, was rendering from the, from the agent, and also presentation material from the agent. And we receive a letter of, uh, interest or concern from, uh, actually no address attached to it, it's Ritter Canell. And we have oppositions, a letter from thirty-nine fifty, uh, Vernon Street, and two forty St. John, and sixty-seven sixty, uh, Vernon Street, and two sixty-nine, uh, St. John's, and sixty-eight Vernon Avenue. And we also receive cor- um, opposition, uh, there's no name provided, from, uh, jo- from, uh, residents of Vernon Street and St. John's, uh, St. John's Road. Ready for the agent, yeah, or the applicant.
Uh, through the chair, we have the agent online and four registered speakers, some are here in person.
Okay, yeah, they're seeking for, uh, six variances on this application, yeah.
Christian, you've been unmuted?
Great, thank you, um, good evening, Madam Chair and Committee Members. My name is Christian Chen, I'm the agent and planner for the applicant, and my address is one five seven Adelaide Street, West Toronto, Ontario.
You do have some proposition, so, uh, please give us a presentation, a five-minute presentation, yeah.
Yes, absolutely, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Um, so just off the bat, I would like to amend variance number six to six. So just off the bat, I would like to amend variance number six to six point three meters. That's the height variance for the garden suite and that's to align with the maximum permitted height of the recently approved garden suite bylaw amendment that was passed, I believe at the end of June.
Okay.
Or sometime in July by city council.
So you want to amend variance number six?
Six, yes, please.
To what?
So just to six point three zero meters.
Oh, zero instead of nine, okay.
Yes. And so just to explain a bit further, we have discussed this application with city planning. It was Ms. Bruna Negro who was the planner we were working with and she noted no concerns with the application for the variances for the garden suite. We don't have any other city divisions filing any remaining concerns. And also just to address it right up front, because this question was asked the previous application before you today for a garden suite in that the reason why we're coming in with a garden suite application not concurrently with the fourplex application a year ago was at the time, of course, as stated before, development charges would have applied to all five units and now they are resolved by city council, by Murrell Regulation Motion. And also that Ontario Regulation four six two dash twenty-four resulted in the garden suite zoning amendment updates and therefore the design took into account what Ontario Regulation four six two dash twenty-four and also the garden suite bylaw update in the draft form at the time would have contemplated. So the proposal is for a new two-story, one-unit rental building with garden suite with two bedrooms. The floor area is eighty-five point seven nine meters squared over two stories. And just in terms of the site context, yes, it's being developed with the fourplex, it was approved last year. Committee of Adjustment, frontage of seven point six two meters and a lot area of two seven eight point seven zero meters. With regards to the neighborhood housing context, this area is the junction area, neighborhood ninety and just to note that this area has a lower percentage of households with inadequate housing and unsuitable housing than the city of Toronto at large. But the neighborhood also has a lower percentage of rental household in comparison to the city at large. There's also a higher percentage of transit ridership denoting reduction reliance on private automobiles in comparison to the rest of the city. And just to note also in discussing the variances themselves, variance number one, this is the reduction in soft landscaping in the rear yard. It's reflective of the hard landscaping elements already present on the site and as proposed for the original multiplex development in terms of providing accessible pathway widths. And there's a wheelchair accessible unit in the basement unit of the fourplex with an elevator that's causing reduction in the rear yard soft landscaping. All the walkways are to be constructed and are being constructed with permeable babying to ensure that stormwater management is still available. With the rear setback, variance number two, we are proposing a zero point eight meter rear setback whereas one point five is required. And if you can turn to the floor plans on the second floor, it would facilitate a two-bedroom garden suite. So without a rear setback reduction, the second bedroom and a family-sized rental unit would not be feasible in the proposed garden suite. The garden suite itself is also eighty-five point seven nine meters squares in GFA, which is thirty-five meters square less than what the maximum permitted GFA would be permitted in the twenty twenty-five garden suite zoning bylaw amendment, which is a hundred and twenty meters squared. With regards to variance three, the garden suites proposed with a separation distance that is consistent with the development standard is authorized by Ontario Regulation four two six dash twenty-four. And if I can ask staff to go to page three of the supporting material, this shows the elevation. The next page before that. So if you can zoom in there, this is a rendering that I did that shows what the approved garden suite zoning bylaw amendment provisions provide in terms of the built form amassing and you can see here in the gray hatched areas of where this particular proposal goes beyond what the garden suite bylaw, the updated garden suite bylaw in Ontario Regulation four two six dash twenty-four provides. And also to note, to go into variances four and five with respect to the penetration of the rear and side angular planes, the garden suite is proposed with no side angular planes, which is consistent with the development standards authorized by Ontario Regulation four two six twenty-four and provides that properties with a main building containing up to two units that have no applicable angular planes. So in this case, of course, we have four units in the main building. Ontario Regulation four two six dash twenty-four provides that if you have two units, that you can have no angular planes. But then the recently approved garden suite bylaw amendment, in fact, goes beyond this and provides that on properties with billings of up to four units, you can have no angular planes on the front or the rear. And the proposed penetration, the side angular planes are requested to facilitate a two-bedroom, again, a two-bedroom garden suite. If we had to impose the roof slope, then those floor areas for those two-bedroom units on the main floor, on the second floor will be compromised. And of course, variance number six with respect to the revised variance of six point three meters is consistent with what the garden suite monitoring zoning bylaw.
Your five minutes is up. So, yeah, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, your five minutes up. Before we move on, I'd like to also ask a question that's just about the variances. Just to make sure you have reduced your modify the height vitals, variance number six or at the same time, number three two? Is this, it's a slightly different phrase, but it is also just regarding the height is six point three nine?
Yes, thank you for that, Madam Chair. That would also revise variance number three to six point three zero meters as well.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. So we will wait until we hear the other speakers, then we'll get back to you. You'll come back to respond, okay? Let's have the next speaker.
Through the chair, we have several speakers here in person. Perhaps we can have the first speaker come to the podium. And just make sure the mic is on.
First, before I introduce myself, if you could, I don't know if you can bring up my letter because it did include photos. And I believe it was the first letter that was submitted. Yeah. My name is Mary Sheena. My mother lives at fifty Vernon Street, which is directly next door to the development Vernon Street. As I noted in my letter, we find it extremely shocking that a plan to add through the existing development of a fourplex building has been filed. I know this was just explained, but it certainly wasn't explained to the residents a year ago. It was just a year ago that the plan for the current fourplex development was approved with the allowance of green space at the back. And now they are applying to develop that green space. If you look at the photos, you will see the impact of the fourplex on the property. The first photo, you will see that the fourplex completely consumes the lot. The structure is three times the size of the house that was on that lot and is the longest and tallest structure on the street. It has completely blocked the sightlines of neighbors. Multiplex development was approved based on the specific plans of the fourplex. Attempting to revise those plans now with additional structure undermines both this process and the public's trust in this process. As many letters have stated, we consider this to be a deliberate strategy in Mod City, but you've just explained that apparently this follows the rules, so I will skip that point. According to your notice, the committee must be satisfied that the variance is minor and that the proposal is desirable for appropriate development and the use of the land. I would suggest that in this case, the requested variance do not meet this criteria. The culmination of the current development of the fourplex and the variance required for the garden suite is not minor. Adding to the height, the flat roof and the large windows will significantly impact the privacy and shadowing for all the neighboring properties. With regard to the soft landscaping and green space, it says there's a minimum of fifty percent of the area between the rear walls and the soft landscape and the variance is forty-one percent. Sorry, is forty-one percent. But that includes the land under the fire escape. If you look at the photos, you will see the extent of the size of the fire escape, which is an eyesore. I would also suggest that the development of two-story structure is not desirable and appropriate for the neighborhood, you know, at the back of people's backyards with no laneway buffer, which is a lot of what has been discussed around here and is usually a big consideration. Many of the letters of opposition have also noted the recent investigation that is underway. Mod City is under investigation for moving a tree without a permit at one of their other projects. The city denied the developers' request to cut the tree, but they cut it down anyway and proceeded to apply for a parking pad permit. In addition, it would seem that they have already installed the drain for the garden suite, which is yet to be, yet to be approved. At the time, I was not able to provide a photo, but I do have a photo with me if you would like to see that. These practices are highly questionable. They clearly have no respect for the neighborhoods and are exploiting the system and I would hope that the Committee of Adjustment will take this all into consideration. The city and the developers continue to use the need for affordable housing as an excuse to rationalize these developments. This garden suite is not going to solve the housing crisis in the city. The fourplex apartments and the garden suite will not be targeting those who are in need of housing. These are higher-income units and not affordable housing. The committee has approved the fourplex with the plans that were filed in this application and it highlights loopholes and gaps in the system that developers are taking full advantage of at the cost of others. This committee needs to draw the line. Your decision impacts lives. Our long-term neighbors on the other side of fifty Vernon Street decide to sell their house once this committee approved the development of the multiplex last year. The current development of the fourplex has negatively impacted the value of the neighboring properties. Allowing this structure will result in further overdevelopment of the lot and will result in further reduction of value in neighboring properties as well as negatively impacting the green space views, light, privacy, and overall enjoyment of properties which residents have a right to. I would ask the committee to not approve this project.
Okay, a question. Sorry, I was looking at the pictures that you presented.
We have a question, but they didn't make a comment. I think this, you know, I do believe that context is everything. If you don't understand the context, it's very hard to truly understand what you're talking about. And I thank you for the photographs because I think your photographs, apart from the amassing of the existing structure, the images of the staircase at the rear, which doesn't leave much of the imagination, I think it's very helpful in my own thinking.
Yes, and you know, architectural plans and drawings look so perfect, but the reality is often very different.
And I, just in continuation of my thought processes, the renderings of the garden suite. Just a family sitting with a lot of people.
Sorry, through the chair, I'm not sure if member Byatt's mic is on.
Oh, yeah, I'll say.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Thank you. I won't repeat everything I've said as long as you have heard what I've said. I think that's important. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Any question to this speaker? Okay, thank you. We have the next speaker, please, yeah.
Good afternoon, almost good evening. I want to thank all of you first for your work. We've been here, some of us, since twelve and I definitely have a much deeper respect for what you have to do with this committee. My name's Elizabeth Halreich. I live at two forty-one St. John's Road. So I am almost directly behind and one house west. I've lived there for forty years. Most people on our street, we lived there for a long time. And our experience with the development that took place with the fourplex is why I'm going to say the following. Well, first of all, we got our notice for Tuesday, July twenty-second. I just received it three days ago. So I didn't really have any time to prepare anything other than just telling you my feelings about what I would like to see happen. I know people in our street, some of them have been able to submit some detailed letters that are quite technical and articulate with what our concerns are, so I'm not going to go over that. We have a lot of concerns to do with consultation, to do with privacy, to do with transparency, to do with the loss of green space. And our experience, as she outlined, with the fire escapes, where we were never consulted about anything to do with the first building. It was a very unpleasant experience, so we're expecting more of the same. And what I would like to ask is for a deferral on the decision so that we can consult and meet with the agent and discuss what this is really going to look like. There is no other way that any of us would even consider supporting this. We're aware that they're looking at a lot of the other houses on the street that are full of people that are in their late eighties who also, like myself, have very deep lots. And so we have overwhelming concerns. They're very deep backyards. And as it stands right now, I also look at that fire escape and they're very wide, the platforms. He said he didn't want to put in balconies and that's what we got instead. So in terms of green space, I can see people will be enjoying those balconies. Those platforms on the fire escapes, we never thought anything would need to be that wide. Of course, we need a fire escape, but it just doesn't seem like it's workable. We're all going to be looking at a wall of, just a big, long wall if we don't deal with this now. So I would like to ask for a deferral on the decision. So the majority of us who are away on holidays, who haven't had time to like to prepare anything, are able to meet with the agent, meet with, you know, the architects and talk about some of our concerns. And perhaps we won't have the same experience as we've had with the fourplex. And as my neighbor mentioned, when you see that the drain pipe has already been installed, you know, they're just so sure they're going to get improved, whatever they put forward, is it a little disconcerting? So that's about it. I'm going to finish. I have nothing else to say. I think everybody else will be providing the details of their concerns with the variances through their letters. And I believe one person is supposed to be on Zoom as well. Is there anything else you want to ask?
No, we will get the agent to respond to your request. Okay, yeah, for sure. We will bring him back. But we have other speakers first. Yes, please, yeah, come up, yeah, and introduce yourself and then, yeah, you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Max Bush. I live at two thirty-five St. John's Road, which is.
Two fifty-five?
Two thirty-five.
Two thirty-five.
And I also wanted to thank you guys for all your time and effort here. And I've been here since two and it's a long slog for me, so I can only imagine you guys. Yeah, so I guess just to address a couple of the things that the agent had mentioned. He mentioned that there's inadequate rentals. There are many high rises going on in the junction area. There's at least, I'd say, ten maybe on the strip of Dundas alone that are being built. So I don't, I don't see any, any cause or any reason behind adding another unit when they've just added four. I'm in complete support of the fact that they put in a drain and had the expectations of this just going by and floating by without any consultation of you guys or with us as neighbors. Ultimately, the bylaws and the zoning bylaws are in place for a reason. They're to protect the neighborhoods, they're to protect the people living in the neighborhoods and they're to protect the general feeling of Toronto. And in this, they've listed six different variances, all of which affect the neighbors living behind them, to which we at two thirty-five live kitty corner. And with the new four-story building, they can see into our backyards, from that height anyways. And I can't imagine having just a wall, a twenty-foot wall right behind my neighbor's house, which inevitably affects me as well and my other neighbors. So I'm not sure why, I mean, why they'd be allowed to get away with, say, three or four on their requested variances, which are, they've mentioned development standards have changed. have changed to allow for garden suites. But I think those standards are for places that allow garden suites where they're viable, where there's a laneway behind or enough room where it's not backing up less than a metre away from the neighbour's property. Yeah. So, I mean, ultimately, to go through it, the first one, they've reduced the amount of area in the backyard, and there is the big fire escape. Thank you. There is the big fire escape that allows for people to go outside and just hang out. But again, that's an invasion of privacy where they loom over their fellow neighbour's backyards. Again, yeah. So for two, the setback is less than required, and they're trying to build bigger than necessary and get as much space as they can into that area. I apologize, I'm not as prepared. I wish I had brought in some pictures, as Mary did, the woman living whose mum lives beside the unit, to give a grand scale. I mean, if you're able to look at the lot drawings, you can see there's no other units on the street that have that kind of setback or that big of a lot. They're all two-story houses with like an attic, as opposed to a three-story monstrosity. And to add a garden suite on top of that is, I had the correct wording here, just overdevelopment of a lot.
Okay, thank you. Any question to this speaker? Thank you, it was good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Yeah. We have more speakers?
Through the chair, we're going to move on to the speakers online.
Okay, please, yeah.
Howard, you've been unmuted. Howard, you've been unmuted. Through the chair, we'll attempt to contact the speaker from 56 Vernon Street. Perhaps we can move on to.
We can come back to this one, yeah.
The speaker from 269 St John's Road. Gabrielle, you've been unmuted.
Hello? Yes, good evening, Chair, Committee. This is Gabriel Guiducci from 269 St John's Road.
Okay. Thank you. Tell us your name, and, yeah, you've got the address. Your name, please, yeah.
Gabriel Guiducci.
All right. So, okay, you have five minutes. Here's your concern.
Yes, I've submitted a letter of opposition to this application, just with, you know, a few pointers there as far as, you know, the privacy concerns, overbuilding and whatnot. But what I do want to bring the attention of the committee, too, is actually what has been submitted by the applicant on his rationale. And I like to bring the attention to his variance, planning justifications, starting from the first one. Speaking of a rear yard soft landscaping, reduction and whatnot, I've had several issues, and I did call plan examination as well, that there is not walkways being shown anywhere connecting to the laneway house, the laneway suite. As well as the proposed bike parking appears to be in front of the entrance. So these are, to some extent, errors that I think were overseen and should have been addressed. And if the case be that there is access to these units with hard landscaping, which there should be, I'm pretty sure, and I believe it will be, it will affect the variance of landscaping. In regards to variance two, the applicant is mentioning the variance will facilitate a two-bedroom garden suite. The bylaws are not written to allow designers to develop from inside out. The variances are designed and calculated to allow massing, and then it is up to our creativity and design, creativity and architects to work within the allowable bylaws. On variance three point, here is bringing up, and four and five, is bringing up 42624. He's done that several times. The 42624 applies to developments up to three units. This is not a development up to three units, this is spars, four units are ready to begin with. They're proposing a fifth unit on the property and trying to use a bylaw that has not relevance to their proposal. And then we go to the height, and I believe the height has been adjusted, correct me if I'm wrong. However, I'm just going to go back to the fact that these bylaws for garden suites, I think, have been designed, the city has had many, many, many meetings for this development and coming up with these outlines, to respect the vicinity of their neighbours. The rear yard is the most, I think, variance that preoccupates me. It will allow a presence in these type of developments with height variances, without angle of, without any privacy. From a building point of view, that's not even allowed to have windows unless they're fire windows, or the windows will have some kind of a fire enclosure. This is building code per se. In any case, I am in opposition of this. I appreciate all your attention to this. I hope I was clear, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. Any question to this speaker? No, we don't have a question for you, so we move on to the next one then. Yeah, thank you.
Ron, you've been unmuted.
Can you hear me, first of all?
Yes, we can hear you.
Very good. Good afternoon, evening, almost. My name is Ron Bellis. I'm at 34 Vernon Street, down the way from the development. And I spoke last time, and I was in this position. So I was in this, at the tail end of the presentation, so I learned that I shouldn't repeat what other people have said, but I don't mind summarising what has been said. So just to begin with, I'd like to, I assume this is being recorded or minuteed, anyway, it's on public record. And it occurred to me in the first session that we had on the main building, why we have bylaws in place that can be waived so easily in one half an hour, and that set precedences for similar situations or projects going down the road. This is not control. This is chaos. I also wonder why Gord Perks is not allowed to attend these things. He is the instigator of this whole fourplex and sixplex problem. I was told by his office that he's not allowed to talk to you people. That's a sad thing. I agree with the previous speaker that noted that Mr Chen wanted to talk about rental housing in our area. Well, that, to me, is not relevant to the simple matter that what we're trying to address here is variances that are about the height of the building, the proximity to proclines, proximity to other new buildings. In fact, every aspect of the dimensioning of this new building needs to have a variance. It seems to me that this has been purposely, this is being shoehorned in behind the existing building. And it's called a garden suite, but Mr Dylan Reid told us that, for me, a garden suite and a laneway house is the same thing, except there's no laneway. You have no jurisdiction over laneway houses, so why are we, what are we doing here? And I think that that's, all of us are aware that without a laneway, you cannot put this building in this place. Besides the minor, relatively minor things of, you know, increased parking, increased density for our neighbourhood, you know, where they're going to, I don't know, put their gardening equipment, they took the shed away that they had proposed, those are all minor. But to me, one of the main things is, if that building in the front is on fire, how do the people in the smaller building get out? Has anybody thought about that? Has this gone to Toronto Fire? That's my question. Somebody can answer that later. To me, this is a disaster waiting to happen. Just for background, I was 42 years in commercial ICI construction, so this doesn't come out of the thin air here. The next thing is, I heard about garbage bins and stuff like that from other presentations. Very interesting. We never talked about that at all. But that affects us on a daily basis here. So, last thing. Mod City. Interesting developer. We fought them on the bigger building, lost. We lost everything, except a tree. The tree they were supposed to protect has lost limbs. The excavation for that tree had to happen twice, because they screwed it up the first time. I watched it carefully. I was showing plans for protecting the roots that came off the internet before forestry, at my request, finally came out and supervised the work that was being done. Unfortunately, that tree, forestry tells me, is under severe distress. So there's that. On Engleton Avenue East, there's another tree that was cut down by this company. And they have, they even told the media that there was no tree there. You people are all aware of that, that was in the news. All interesting things. But at the end of the day, I've been watching this Mod City outfit. Besides those issues with them, I don't see basic safety, Ministry of Labor requirements being followed anywhere along, the construction of the other building. They have no fall protection when they're on the roof. There's no PPE that is required. There's actually no traffic plan or no protection. Today, they have a load of gravel dumped on the road that everybody's supposed to drive around, and it's right on the sidewalk. Okay, one more thing.
Your five minutes is up, though. Yeah.
One more thing.
Yeah.
One more thing. This is Gord Perks. Folks, do not vote these people in. Chow and Perks should not be in charge of this city. It's a disaster.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Can I clarify something?
Sure. You want to ask a question? Yes, could.
No, no, I want to clarify something, because something was attributed to me, which is not correct.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Each variant, each set of variances is discussed based on the variances in front of us. There was an earlier one, which did not have laneway suites variances, so it was not within our jurisdiction. In this case, it is specifically about the garden suite, so it is within our jurisdiction. We have jurisdiction over whatever variances are in front of us, and only those things.
Yes, yes.
Got it.
Okay. Yeah, I hope, yeah, it's a very good point. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. So do we have further speaker?
Through the chair, we're going to try again with the speaker from 56 Vernon Street.
Okay.
Howard, are you there? Through the chair, it appears that the speaker from 56 Vernon Street is not there. And for the record, the speaker from 71 Vernon Street cannot attend, and the registered speaker from 245 St John's Road, we were unable to locate that person.
Okay. So we have made multiple attempts, right, for all this, yeah?
Correct.
Yes.
Through you, Madam Chair, we do have a letter from 245 St John's Road.
Yes, I remember the address, yeah.
So we'll get back the agent, then?
Yeah, we'll get back the agent, maybe he can, yeah. First of all, he should address the issues raised by the other speakers, and also, if you have time, you can just address the 245 St John's Street here. Okay, Mr Chen, we are ready for your response. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and committee members, and I thank the interested parties for their comments. I'll just address them by address, take some notes. 50 Vernon. They raised issues with the proposed soft landscape. We got the rear 41.41 metres square. What's being proposed is 10 metres square, about 100 square feet and change of less than permitted, or the required rear soft landscape, in my opinion. That's minor. Again, as you can see in the site plan, that's, the driving factor for this is the requirement for the accessible walkway, as you can see on the top of your screen, on the top of the site, and that well that goes down to the basement unit, which will include a wheelchair-accessible elevator to access that unit. With regards to garden suites themselves, there was an inference that, you know, this type of housing is not going to solve the housing crisis, and I certainly hear the neighbours' comments, but that's certainly something that's not supported by both the Planning Department and Council, one being the reduction or the elimination of the development charges for fourplexes plus garden suites specifically by the mayor. And this was also specifically to address and encourage the lack of garden suites constructed in the city of Toronto since the initial garden suite bylaw, which is, you know, as you may know, less than 200 permits issued, versus, for example, the city of Vancouver, which has issued at the same time of their zoning bylaw update to include garden suites, 3,000 garden suites. So in my opinion, garden suites do contribute to solving the housing, specifically the rental housing crisis. Thirty-nine percent of the city is detached buildings, which is 883,000 detached homes. And even if 12% of those properties develop with garden suites, that would represent 100,000 additional rental homes in the city of Toronto. With respect to 241 St John's Road, I can certainly sympathise with their feeling that there was a lack of consultation. I will advise my clients to do better on other applications. I'm happy to be slapped over the wrist for that, on this application. I could do better as well. And I apologize for the impression or the actual fact if there wasn't adequate consultation, but my client would like to proceed today instead of requesting a deferral. With respect to privacy, as was on another file before you today, frosted or opaque windows can be placed as a condition on the rear elevation of the proposed garden suite. With respect to the fire escapes, they are compliant with the zoning bylaw, and they are required by the Ontario Building Code for Egress for the number of units in a building. That's something that I know that the OBC and their consultants are looking up to rectify, but currently those fire escapes are required as a second means of egress for this type of building typology. They will have privacy screening in order to address any privacy impacts from those, and I believe that those would have been addressed previously on the other application. For 235 St John's Road, yes, there are many high-rise rental buildings in the vicinity, but again, I'm sure you've heard this before, the city just isn't about providing rental buildings and high-rise apartments. We don't just have tall and sprawl in this city. We are attempting to adhere to what the EHAN initiative is attempting to move forward with by providing missing middle housing, and this is certainly, both buildings are an example of this. If there was a laneway, there would be a laneway suite with a zero-metre sideyard setback in this case, and more of an impact on the neighbours. And also, there are no rear angular planes required for lane suites in that case. 256 St John's comments, again, privacy, we can address those items should the committee decide to approve the application by providing privacy screening and privacy windows on the second story of the garden suite. With regards to comment for variances with design being inside-out, and the inference that applicants should work only within the allowable bylaw, this is simply incorrect. That's the reason why the Committee of Adjustment exists, in order to seek. That's the reason why the Committee of Adjustment exists, in order to seek minor variances that meet the four tests. And if I can ask staff to go back to page two of the supporting material, the side elevation, I would implore you to review this, the elevations, yes, in that, again, the gray-hatched areas are the areas in which this proposal is going beyond what the garden suite zoning bylaw amendment provides in terms of separation distance, angular planes, and setbacks.
Yeah, your five minutes up. So, yeah, I think now we, you still stay, we were going to have some questions here. Yes.
Just follow up on one of the questions. It's something I noticed as well. If we go to the original site plan, can we go to the original site plan?
You mean existing site plan or?
The site plan that was first submitted, so just the next one. Yeah, that one there. Okay. So, I noticed this too, there's no pathways indicated on this one. I know that in the later one, in part of your presentation, has the pathways, but I'm wondering, obviously, without the pathways, there's more soft landscaping. So, I'm wondering if this was what was the original examiner based on, whether in fact there's less soft landscaping now that you're gonna, now that you've actually added some pathways and other things like that. Can you just address that question?
Yes, so the proposal was revised to align better with soft landscaping for the rear yard. I do realize that there is no pathway to the garden suite. However, the intent is, when constructed, that they would be traversing over grass in order to make sure that that variance doesn't increase.
You've added a later one in your presentation, and it does have paved sections on it.
Yes, that's based on the initial plans that were submitted to the Committee of Adjustment, so I incorrectly used that site plan to overlay it with the.
Are you seriously telling me that you're expecting people to walk over grass to reach their garden suite?
That's what my client advises me.
Okay, you realize that that's ridiculous. Like, obviously, people are gonna, anyway. And so, following on, at the moment, if this is the more up-to-date one, you do have the bicycle parking in front of the entrance. So, can you tell us where the bicycle parking actually is going to be? Because presumably, it's not going to be in front of the entrance.
Yes, it could be placed anywhere in the area between the fourplex and the garden suite.
So, do you have a specific location?
Through you, Madam Chair. It's shown on the site plan, abutting the ancillary building.
Yeah, so here, it's in front of the entrance, right? So, clearly, that's not possible. And the, what he's now explaining is a previous plan, it's kind of tucked away somewhere else. Is it actually going to be where the previous plan one was? Sort of tucked away further?
Yes, I believe so, but I'm just looking at the floor plans now. Yes, it does appear that those two bike parking spaces are in front of the entrance, so they would have to be relocated, but once we submit for, should this application be approved and submit for building permits, then we would adjust the site plan to account for that, to make sure that it doesn't impede the entrance to the garden suite.
Okay.
There will be another zoning review prior to the issuance of a building permit, once the building permit plans would be submitted.
So, okay. Well, thank you.
Yeah, so bike parking will be moved down and away from the door, and that can be moved as of right, so long as we show the applicable, the applicable dimensions that comply with zoning. And also, just to address again, Mr. Reed, the path, fire code paths, like paths that required for fire code are not calculated, as for soft landscaping upon building permit review.
So, you're, what you're saying?
Those are required elements, and I think that was also discussed in the previous application for Harriet as well.
So, what you're saying is that there will be a path, but because it's required by fire code, it doesn't count against the soft landscaping?
Yes, that's correct. I think that was also discussed in the previous application for Harriet, so once that goes in and the zoning examiner reviews it as a required path for OBC and Ontario fire code exits, it won't be calculated as part of the soft landscaping.
Right, so even though you'll put a path in that won't affect, even though there will be less soft landscaping, it won't actually affect the variance, is what you're saying?
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
Okay, we have more questions.
Just one quick question. On the same image, the site plan that we were looking at, in the top left-hand corner, we see the stats. So, site statistics, right at the bottom, it says rear yard landscape area. Soft landscape area permitted, 50%, 55.20 square meters. And then, on the right-hand side, the proposed soft landscaping is 32.30 square meters, or 29.26. Is that what you're proposing? Which would be, which would be in contrast to, of course, the variance that you require, requesting.
Through you, Madam Chair, Mr. Byatt, that would be the soft landscape calculation if the RM Zone, or sorry, the Chapter 10.5 regulations that apply to the multiplex. However, it is superseded, if you go over to the right table, you see rear landscaping area. And what happens when a garden suite is proposed is that the Chapter 150.7 landscaping requirements from the garden suite bylaw supersede the rear yard soft landscaping requirements in Chapter 10.5.
I see. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I have one question is to do with some photographs being presented that the back staircase, is this staircase will be enclosed, or is, some photographs showing us that it's only just some steel structure, and the staircase is inside? And is it going to be open like that, or is it going to be enclosed for the main fourplex? It's in some photographs that presented by one of the opposition in the, yeah, further than, much further than, this is by the agent, but further than, there's some photographs, more, going, yeah, there, this group, you see? Yeah, this is like a steel frame, and then the stairs is inside. Is this going to be enclosed, or is it going to be like this?
Madam Chair, it will not be enclosed, however, there will be privacy screening constructed on it in order to prevent overlook and privacy impacts from that specific structure required by building code.
Okay, well, what I'm looking at, you see, you see my question, right? So, the private screen, you said that there will be panels or privacy screening. Where will they be? What will be changed in terms of massing? Is it open like this, or is it going to have been more solid? That's what my question is.
So, the privacy screening, Madam Chair, and I'm just looking at the previous decision from 2024 A5, A0522-24TEY, and the fourplex was approved with three conditions, and the second condition being that the side platforms must be constructed with opaque privacy screening or fencing that is permanent, located on the east and west edges to a minimum height of 1.5 meters. So, it won't be the entire structure, it would just be where the platforms for the stairs would be.
So, on the east and west side, both sides of the staircase will have 1.5 privacy screen, so it will be more solid on each floor, right? On all the, the private screen will be maybe above the second floor of them. So, it will be more, the massing will be more, will be increased. It's not so transparent as it is now, right?
It would be, it would be privacy screening just on the landings for the staircase. It wouldn't be up and down the stair risers themselves.
Oh, okay, so the steel beams is only for supporting it, it's not along the, all the steel beams, you mean?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
That's correct, Madam Chair. And you could see this image, those platforms, so those, or I wouldn't call them platforms, there's stair landings that would have 1.5-meter screening on the sides of those.
I see. Okay, thank you. Yeah. All right, so, any more questions? Okay, we do not have any more questions. Well, now, we are in committee.
Thank you, Jill. Maybe I'll just start off. I find the entire process very problematic. I think one of the first things I noticed was when we had the renditions that were provided by the agent. I think it's in our supplementary package, it's a digital rendering, and it's a lovely rendering, I must say. Looks very, very well done. This lovely family with two children sitting on a little patio with two kayaks in the background, lots of green grass, and I find it very misleading because the reality is very different. And I have to thank the first person who spoke for providing the images of the rear staircase as well. And again, my colleague who pointed out the fact that the site plan shows no patio, no walkway leading to this, which means, and if you look at this rendering, the rendering suggests that there's a lot of hardscape in the backyard, which would again reduce the soft landscaping issue. So, I find the entire presentation somewhat misleading, not adequately represented. I also do find that the, while it's necessary and required to have a fire escape, I think this particular construction leaves a lot to the imagination in terms of, could we have come up with something different that wouldn't be so intrusive as far as the neighbors are concerned? I find the height a problem. I find the soft landscaping issue a real problem as well. So, this is an application that I cannot support.
Yeah, yes, please.
I think it's interesting to compare this to the previous application, which was very similar in concept, but the previous application made a genuine effort to reduce the massing and the impact. It didn't have any side yard setback variances. The angular planes were in place in almost every situation. It actually deliberately dropped the whole building a little bit so that, to reduce the height. Like, the other, the previous application made a genuine effort. Also, it was, had a laneway behind it, even though it was technically not a laneway house to minimize the impact on the rear neighbors. This one, I find, is not making any effort. It's large, it's aggressive. The soft landscaping is extremely dubious in terms of the information provided and the variance asked for. I'm not convinced that in the end, that would actually be the soft landscaping that's in place. The plans are apparently still up in the air. The massing of the staircase as added to the entire, the entire building really takes up already a huge amount of the property, and it creates, it really creates a sense of overdevelopment when you look at the overall effect. So, I think that in this case, I do not think this is a well-thought-out plan. I don't think it's a plan that has considered its setting or the neighbors, and I don't think I can support it.
Yes, actually, you make the same observation when, as you were speaking, I actually compared the previous application. I come up with the same conclusion that in the previous application, although it seems that they have a fourplex, the concept is similar, but the attempt, the result at the end is way, way different because the previous one is that they, the rear lock line setback they meet means that they will mitigate the impact on the rear neighbor, and both sides, they meet the angular plane means that they, you know, they consider that. The only angular plane they did not meet is towards their own fourplex, but in this case, it's the reverse. So, I find that it's troubling, and also, also, I think that they already have the fourplex, which is a huge, although the zoning bylaw is encouraging some development to be fourplex, but it is, to the neighbors, it's still a huge impact to take in. It should be gradual. So, I think that they have gained a lot by building the fourplex. And if the garden suite, this one is proposed as a single story, I think that it will be much more appropriate for this development, not the two-story.
Agreed, and I don't, I really don't think that there's, there's no requirement that it be two bedrooms. If you have a smaller one-bedroom one that has less impact, then I think that's what you should be looking towards, and that's still providing some useful housing.
Yeah, I'm more concerned of the impact of the, all the neighbors that are right next to the garden suite.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Also, do we, so, do we have more comments, or we have a motion?
Through the chair, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, sure. I'll move a motion, Chair. I'd like to move a motion to refuse this application.
As amended?
As amended, yes, thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Reed, second, and all agree to refuse this? Yes, it's unanimously refused, sorry. Okay, that marked number 26. Now, on item number 27, the property is 74 Brookside Avenue. This is to construct a one-story ancillary building, which is a detached garage in the rear yard of the property, containing the existing two-story detached dwelling, abutting the laneway. The existing rear garden shed will be demolished. We received a survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, and three photographs of trees, and couple letters from the agent, and also comparable examples of, by the agent, and we have received comment from urban forestry.
Through the chair, we have the agent here in person, and no registered speakers.
Okay. All right, so they're seeking only one single variance on this. Okay, thank you. Yeah, welcome. It's maybe a little bit late for me to see you.
No, that's all right.
So, I didn't see you, sorry. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Joseph Mariney. I'm the property owner and the applicant for 74 Brookside Avenue.
Okay, since you do not have any opposition or speakers to this application, let me check whether we need a presentation from, no, we're pretty straightforward, I guess. Do we have questions, though? We don't want to even ask a question? So, we are ready to discuss this application. Do you have something you want to address us since you're here?
No, if you don't have any questions, I'll let you guys handle it.
Okay, let's move into discussion, our decision, please.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Yes.
I was slightly concerned about the size, but I think the applicant made a good case that there's lots of garages of this size in the area, and it fits with the environment, and otherwise, it's a perfectly reasonable and, yeah, perfectly reasonable request, and really not, not a variance that will have any impact on anyone. So, I move that we approve this variance. I will note that there's a forestry condition number two.
Yes, a forest, yeah. Second, yes, we're second with the forestry condition number two, all in favor? It's approved unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was good presentation, by the way. Thank you. Item number 28, the property is 108 Harvard Street. This is to alter the existing two-story mixed-use building by constructing a rear three-story addition and a ground-floor one-car garage, abutting the laneway. The east side, a second and third, first-story portion of the rear addition will be partially cantilevered above the exterior passway, passageway. The existing office space on the ground floor, as well as two residential dwelling unit on the second and third level, will be maintained. We have received a plan, a survey, site plans, floor plans, and elevations, six photographs of the property. We also received comment from transportation engineering, and also one support, no, some, three letters of support from 7785 Unit 101, and also 112 Harvard Street.
Through the chair, we have the agent online, and no registered speakers.
And they are looking for six variances.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you, yeah.
Hi. Would I be able to ask if we could pull up a reference drawing package that was uploaded to the application information center before I start my presentation?
By the way, you do not have any opposition, or anyone wants to speak to your application. So in that, in that case, sometimes we will ask the panel whether they want to have a presentation or not, or whether, we have studied all the material submitted.
For you, Madam Chair, can we just have, can we just have her introduce herself, first and last name and address?
Yeah, same, yeah, same mistake, I mean, keep forgetting.
Yes, hello, my name is Cindy Rendely, and I'm the architect representing the property owner of 108 Harvard, and I'm located in the city at 44 Charles Street West.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so let me check with the panel whether they want to have a presentation first. Do you want a short one, or you want no, straightforward?
No, I think it's fairly straightforward.
Okay, so do you want to have, ask some questions? Yeah, you have some questions?
Don't have any, but Mr. Reed may have some questions.
I think it's pretty clear. It's quite a complex, like, thing, but I think that it's pretty straightforward once it comes down to it, so I think I'm okay.
You're okay? Yeah, actually, I know the area very well because I'm just step away from it, and yeah, so I don't need a presentation.
Oh, actually, just one quick question. The angular plane thing, am I correct, and it's actually a really, really tiny intrusion?
It's a very, very, not even discernible, little triangle that's nine inches high on its tallest side.
Right, okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you zoom in there, you can see that the two arrows are pointing to that very tiny little parapet cap.
Okay, I had a feeling that that was the case, I just wanted to be sure. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. So we are ready to discuss this application. Do you have anything specifically you want to address the panel before we make a decision?
No, but as per someone's previous comment about what you do in your day, in your day job is to be applauded, and the fact that you have just absorbed all of this stuff is pretty remarkable, and I thank you for that.
Oh, we're getting used to it, that's for sure. Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Now we are in committee, yeah. Actually, I'm really just step away from it, and then I see this building, the row of the whole street almost every day. I think it's appropriate.
It's a kind of a delightfully complicated building.
Yeah.
With all these different pieces to it, and...
But the whole street is contained, all this very complicated little buildings.
Yeah, but I noticed that, in fact, like, the extending to the rear, but the rear at the moment is just concrete, so it's not like it's, you know, we're not losing any green space or anything like that. So I feel like it's a, it's a creative and interesting proposal.
Yeah, so do we have any conditions, or anything like that, no, eh?
No, there are none.
Yeah, so someone would like to put a motion?
Sure, I'll take one. And just to add, by the way, the rear of this property, there's a laneway.
Yeah.
So it doesn't have an impact on the neighbors on the other side either. When I looked at this application, I looked at all the variances and realized, well, there were six variances, each were minor, and the total ask is actually quite reasonable. So I'd like to move a motion to approve this application with no conditions attached.
Okay. Second, Mr. Reed, second, and all in favor with no conditions, approve unanimously, thank you.
Very brief break.
Oh, yeah, we have five minutes brief, yeah, five minutes.
I don't even need five minutes.
Oops. Yep.
32. Oh, sorry, 33. 33. Almost there.
Yes, please. Now, we resume. Item number 29, addresses 62 Columbine Avenue. This is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by enclosing the front porch and constructing a new front landing with stairs. We have received a survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, 10 photographs of the property, and a decision affecting the subject property. We also, we have, we receive a front yard parking plan, and a comment from transportation engineering, and they are seeking four variances.
Through the chair, we have the agent here in person, and no registered speakers.
Oh, no, okay, so, please introduce yourself, and, yeah, tell us your name and address.
Afternoon. My name's Jason Kiefer. My address is 496 St. James Street, London.
Okay, yeah, so you do not have any opposition, or anyone will speak to this application, except yourself? So do we need a presentation? Do you have questions to the agent? No, we don't, sure, we're not going to come. Okay, no questions, so we are ready to discuss this. You do?
Question, please.
Yes.
Not a contentious one for us.
Sure.
It's just, variance number four says you won't be providing parking space on-site, but the parking pad remains. So I was getting a little confused, but the pad's there, but not providing parking, if you don't mind.
Yeah, that's, that's right. We kind of had a bit of a back-and-forth of zoning on that. It's been flagged because the parking space isn't wholly on the property, but we do have a licensed parking space at the front of the property. And they intend to maintain that, that space, so, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because the property, yeah.
There's a velocity there.
Yeah, the property line is way across.
That's right.
Yeah, hardly is not their property.
Ah, yeah, but...
Yeah, so, thank you. So are we ready to discuss this case? Do you have something you want to address to the panel before we start the discussion?
No.
No, okay, thank you. So we are in discussion? We have a motion?
Yeah, this is very straightforward. The one issue is the parking with transport, I'm very pleased that they cleared it with transportation, that was great, get that all clarified, makes it, makes our job really easy. Really, the, otherwise, the impacts are minor, so, and I think this is a pretty frequent thing. Also, the porch is only half the frontage, so the impact really is quite minimal. So I move that we approve these variances with no, no conditions.
Okay, second, okay, yeah, we have a second, just wait, maybe. All approve with no conditions? It's approved unanimously, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so we, item number 30, that addresses 96 West Lynn Avenue. This is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by enclosing the existing front porch and constructing a new front landing and stair. We have received a survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and three photographs of trees on the property, and also decision affecting the property, and map, and seven photographs of comparable property from the agent, and we have received support 98 and 94 West Lynn Avenue. And that's all the material we have received.
Through the chair, we have the agent online, and no registered speakers.
Yeah. We also receive, oh, in supplemental, we have received 96 Lynn, oh, we have, I already read that, thank you. Yeah, let's have the agent, please, yeah.
Lena, you've been unmuted.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair, and the comments. My name is Cindy, and the address is 245 Long Island Road, which is 1011, and the agent will be on.
Okay, you don't have opposition or any other speakers, so I, I won't see whether we need a presentation? No, do we have questions? No, no questions? So we do not need a presentation from you? We have done, we have studied all your material. We are ready to discuss this application. Do you want to address the panel on any specific issue before we start the discussion?
No, Madam Chair, that's good.
What? Sorry, I didn't catch that.
No, I understand, nothing's bad.
Oh, okay, thank you, yes. Now we are in discussion, yeah.
I'll, Madam Chair, I'll take this one. I mean, it's, it is extremely straightforward, similar to the previous one. Application, just a single variance, and very minor variance request. I'd like to move approval of this application, there are no conditions attached to this particular one.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, because when I was reading the application, I thought I was reading the old one. Anyway, yes.
I'll second with additional note that both of the neighbors have supported this, which I think is valuable, so I appreciate, I appreciate that work.
Okay, so you're seconding it, okay. All in favor with no conditions, unanimously approved, thank you. Item 31, 90 Fulton Avenue. This is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a front third-story dormer. The existing dormer will be demolished, and we have a third-story addition, and we have three, three-story addition with rear basement walkout, and we have ground for deck with stairs. We have received a copy of surveys, site plan, floor plan, elevations, two photographs of the property, and we also received support from 100 Fulton, and 10 other, 10 other letters of support from, from owners 74, 86, 88, 92, 99, 100, and 104 Fulton, and also 60, 70, 96 Fulton, yeah.
Through the chair, we have the agent online, and no registered speakers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chair and members of committee.
Yes.
My name is Lynn Houston. I'm the representative of the clients for this report.
Can you give us your, also your address for the record, please?
I apologize, 49 Oakcrest Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Yes. You do not have any opposition? And let's see whether we require presentation from you. Seeking four variances. Any questions?
No.
No? Okay, it seems that it's a straightforward application. We do not have any questions either. Do you want, do you have any issues you want to address to us before we start the discussion?
No, I see no need.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, we are in committee.
Maybe I'll just start off, Chair.
Yes.
I think this is a very straightforward application. We see many of these in the city. Essentially, it's altering and redoing the dormer and extending out to the back while they are, what is it, four, five variances?
Yeah.
None of them are excessive.
Mm-hmm.
And I think eminently supportable.
Okay. Except for FSI, maybe the existing one is beyond the point six time already, I guess, yeah. I didn't ask the question, I should have. Okay, yeah. Mr. Reed, any comment or?
I just said, I appreciate that they are being restrained in pushing the addition back. It only goes slightly further than their attached neighbor and really matches their other neighbor, which is a nice change from some of the things we've seen. And I, I really appreciate that they've clearly made an effort to integrate well into, into the, the neighborhood and to, and with their neighbors.
Yeah, I think so. It's quite a reasonable request. I, I think it's a small addition. Okay, so do we have a motion on the floor?
I'll move to approve, Chair.
Yes.
No conditions.
Yeah, second, Mr. Reed. We have a second. All in favor with no conditions? Approved with no condition? Thank you. And now, we are on the second last item, 32, 49 Ontario Street and 72 to 96 Berkeley Street. This is to alter the development standard of the site-specific zoning bylaw for mixed-use building 45, 49 stories by increasing the total building height, the height of the podium and also the mechanical penthouse vertical projection for equipment and structures and screening and cladding encouchment of building A. Also, to reduce the number of bicycle parking spaces and to alter the bicycle parking locations. Related site plan approval is, is currently under review and consideration. There will be a total of 1,020, 227 residential dwelling units, including 245, 245 affordable housing units on this lot. And we have received a survey site plan for plans and elevations, 20 photographs of the property and cover letter from the agent, office report, and long-term parking justification letter from the agent, and presentation material from the agent and also the site-specific zoning bylaw. We also received comment from transportation engineering and a staff report from urban, uh, from city planning, also from MetroLinks and also community planning. And that's all, yeah, this is all the things we have received. We are ready for the agent.
Through the chair, we have the agent here in person and no registered speakers.
Yes. And let's have the, oh, okay, please introduce yourself to us, yeah.
Hi, my name's Ian Veloso.
Yes.
Glad to be with you almost to the end tonight. Address is 134 Peter Street, acting on behalf of, as the agent for the file.
Thank you. Actually, I think it's a lot, to me, is this like a big development project. Can you give us maybe as short as possible, just in a nutshell?
Absolutely, yeah.
Presentation so that we can wrap our heads around it?
Yeah, absolutely. I think we prepared a quick presentation deck here. So, just at a high level, from the, from the way you read the purpose of the application, it's a 1,200, approximately 1,200 units, 200 affordable housing units. Happy to be, you know, fully supported with the city on the rental housing supply program. Really excited to be getting this project off the ground. The variances we have today are very minor in nature, and if you look at the screen or on the first page here is just showing the current bylaw heights. On the second page, just showing the minor nature, if you please, yeah, the minor nature of the increments that we're proposing. The reason for the height variances are simply for, in the original zoning bylaw, there wasn't enough allowance for mechanical transfers and just making the building work. And then, the other change is, in the same vein, on the MPH height, we're just including for height to make an actual mechanical penthouse work. We're not adding GFA or anything else, just to, just to make the technical aspects of the building work. This slide here is just to show the side-by-side comparison, the minor revisions we've made to the various heights at the top of house, at the tower level, and at the podium level. About three meters on the tower heights and about two meters on the podium heights. Again, just to satisfy some of those minimum height requirements we require for mechanical. And that's the bulk of the tower-related and massing-related changes. The last slide is just a summary of what we're seeking on the bike parking. Seeking a couple of things. One is the allowance to provide bike parking on the P1 and P2 levels. And then, the other change is to allow for the bike park, reduction of long-term bike parking, so short-term bike parking to remain the same. And we are aware and have had conversations with city planning and we're aware of the condition to apply the cash-in-loue program associated, the currently enforceable cash-in-loue program for the replacement of long-term bike parking. And I think you'll also see, as you mentioned, we also have had discussions and support letters from Heritage Planning, Transportation, and MetroLinks has provided their support as well.
Thank you. I have one question.
Oh, you go ahead.
Oh, my question is very simple. It's about the affordable units.
Yes.
Is this an agreement with the city or how do you maintain that?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's an agreement with the city. Through the rental housing supply program.
Okay. And then, is the, is the rental sort of pricing?
Yep, it's all within the, all within the affordable housing guidelines from the city.
With the city?
Yeah.
Okay.
20% affordable housing, which equates to the 245.
Is there a, is there a time set, setting for the affordability or is it permanent?
Uh, there is a time setting. I believe it's 10 or 20 years on the affordability period, as per the city's, city's guideline.
10 to 20 years?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's not very much.
Yeah, that's a good information. And also, these affordable units, they, they, they have different types, right? They're not just the?
Yeah, that's right, yeah. The affordable units in this building will be provided consistent with all of the market units. So, 20% is affordable, the remaining part of the building is purpose-built rental. Affordable will be provided at the same size and mix as the rest of the market units.
Question. So, why, so, I mean, in the site plans, there seems to be lots of space on P1 level. Why is the majority of the bike parking being pushed to P2?
We use a lot of the, a lot of the P1 level is associated with garbage and other main servicing on the, on P1, sprinkler rooms, garbage rooms, the loading room, partial loading is down there. So, it just happens to work out for the flow that we have more open space available on P2. And the general reason we're providing it on the below grade is because we're trying to maximize the amount of amenities that we're providing throughout the building, which would otherwise allow, the current allowance is to have bike parking on ground floor and second floor. We're trying to maximize the amount of amenities, which is, we believe is more valuable to the renters and allowing for the access of the bike parking on P2 allows us to maximize the amenities.
Mm-hmm. So, are all these units, like 2,000, all rental units?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Good.
I see, yeah, thank you. That, yeah, that's different, quite, mostly like condos now proposing, right? All right, thank you. Any questions? Yeah, please.
Just occurred to me, sorry. I'm glad it's all rental. Just off the top of your head, are there three-bedroom units, two-bedroom units?
Yep, that's right. It's about the 10% three-bedroom. I believe, top of my head, it's about 20, 20 to 25% two-bedrooms. The remainder is one beds and studios.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. I don't, yeah, I, I think this question, I don't think we will limit, yes, the question. So, any more questions, please? Okay, we do not have any more question. Now, we in committee. Thank you.
So, the, the height variances are indeed minor and, you know, I have no problem with those. I actually was pretty concerned about the bicycling-related variances. The city, first of all, this is like a prime cycling location in the city. It's between two major cycling lanes on Richmond and Adelaide and right near Sherburne, which is one of the main north-south bike cycling lanes. The city is really trying to make cycling, you know, the first choice and parking a second choi, vehicle parking a second choice and pushing the, reducing the number of bike parking and pushing the bike parking down to the lower level really seems to be making it a secondary priority rather than the number-one priority for travel options. However, I think that the planning condition, the, the cash-in-loue makes it supportable. The fact that they will be giving a considerable amount to support the bike share program, I think that makes me able to support those, those cycling changes.
Yes.
Otherwise, I think I would have serious concerns with them.
Given that, is that part of the site plan approval agreement or do we need to?
We, we have a condition. The planning condition is that they, they will pay a significant amount of money to the bike share program.
Okay.
In, in compensation for reducing the number of long-term bike parking.
Okay.
So, given that, I think it's acceptable. Otherwise, I would have had a problem with it.
Yes, yes, now I see, yeah, this is a part of the, there's two conditions.
Yeah.
Suggested, okay. Mr. Byatt, any comment?
No, I think, Mr. Reed.
Okay, you have, we have a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve these variances with the heritage condition and with the planning condition.
With the planning condition, yeah. With condition. All in favor with those conditions? Is approved? Thank you very much unanimously.
Thank you.
And now, we, we have the final item is 33, 137 Boston Avenue. This is to construct a two-story ossidary building. It's a one-car garage and with elevator on the main level and one laneway suite on the second level. And is in the back, in the rear yard, butting the laneway. We have received a survey site plan for plans elevations, three photographs of the property and also this, a decision affecting the property. And staff report from Urban Forestry and also we have 36 signature petition in support. So, we are ready for the applicant or the, the agent?
Through the chair, we have the agent online and no registered speakers.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, committee. Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Max Murchison, and I'm here on behalf of the homeowners, Gary and Leanna, and their son Henry on this application.
Yeah, okay. Did you give us your address? I, I didn't see.
137 Boston Avenue.
Okay, thank you. So, you do not have any opposition. In fact, you have a lot of support. So, let me see whether anyone wants to have a presentation? No? Do we have questions? No? Okay, we, we have studied the material and we don't, not need a presentation from you or we have no question either. So, do you have anything you want to address the, this panel before we move into discussion?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward. I will leave it to the committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so now, we are in, in committee. And, yeah, I'm just impressed that they gathered a lot of support, which, and I'd like to also comment that we have seen a lot of laneway house applications and very seldom, no, there's some, actually, addressed to the accessibility. I, I think that this is a good, a good move forward type of development because we always just put that, you know, out of our consideration, yeah.
From my perspective, I, when I first saw the height, just looking at the variances and the height, I'm not a fan of excessive heights when it comes to laneways suites or garden suites. But upon looking at the context.
Yeah.
And I think the context speaks to why the height is required.
Yeah.
And that makes it, for me, a very acceptable application.
Yeah, it's, the, the height is mainly just the, in a location to accommodate the, the elevator, the extra height, right?
Exactly, there is a good reason for the height.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Okay, so, Mr. Reed, any comment or you have?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think a difference between this and some of the other ones we've seen that are similar is that it's just at the back of a house. It's not at the back of a huge overwhelming building. So, I feel like the impact is, is actually relatively minimal. And, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Because also, they are seeking only one variance.
Exactly, there's only one variance.
Yeah, yeah, so the impact, well, about overlook and all, that's not an issue here. Okay.
Anyway, I think it's, it's absolutely supportable, especially given the, the community support behind it as well.
Yeah, I'm quite impressed with the number of supports. Yes, okay, do we have a motion?
The other thing I wanted to point out, actually, part of that distance is actually just a one-story mudroom. So, you know, the, the actual, if you didn't count the mudroom, I think it might actually be either.
More than, more than?
It might actually be within code or it would be, you know, close.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I understand what you say.
So, you know, the mudroom is, is really, like, it's not that significant. So, I, I don't think that.
It's the worst scenario, yeah.
Yeah, like, there's just a small, a small one-story thing sticking out at the back, which I think is affecting the variance. The variance would be much even, even smaller if we didn't consider that. So, again, it doesn't really, and I, my understanding is that they have done a recent renovation, so it's not like that's going to be changed. So, again, I think that mitigates the impact.
Yeah, actually, you don't mind if I get out of the committee and ask the agent a question because I think it's relevant? Can we bring back the agent? I have one, just simple question. Is that you have made this extra height because of the elevator, I guess, but do, is this unit accessible in terms of the travel, the path of travel from the other, from the laneway or from the front? Is it like also accessible? Does it need to go up and down the stairs?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, it's accessible. It has a side, sideways to access the unit from the front of the property.
From the front.
And also, from the back, we, we have, of course, the laneway.
Oh, so, so the laneway, there's no step, so they can just go straight into the unit?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I want to clarify because then it will?
Of course, of course.
It will be in line?
It's accessible from both sides, yes.
Because that will be in line before you're, you're proposing the elevator. Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah. Now, we back into committee and we have a motion? Yeah?
I'll make a motion to approve these variances with forestry condition number three.
Three, yeah, that's a forestry condition three, yeah. So, with that condition, all in favor? Oh, you seconded, sorry, sorry, I always assumed that you would second it already, sorry. Mr. Byatt will second that and then, all in favor of that condition? Yeah, unanimously approved. Thank you very much, yes. And now, the time is 7:44 PM and the hearing is adjourned.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members.
Yes, thank you.